Well, welcome everybody and thanks for tuning in. First time that we've attempted to do this, but it's something that we as a group do all of the time. And this is what your, this is our investment committee for a little John financial. So Wes, you want to introduce yourself real quick? Just let them know where you're coming from.
Yeah, I'm Wes Holt. I currently live in Salem, Oregon, and we have an office down here as well. And been working excited about working together for the last several years. And so this is part of that process. So we're grateful and excited to be on the call today.
Great. Justin, how about you?
Justin Brogman, I'm here in the Roseburg office with David. Also very excited about this call, especially since it's the first time we've done it. So I'm looking forward to it.
Cool. And I think a lot of folks, so I'm David Littlejohn. And you know, we teased the firm was named Littlejohn, not because I'm terribly narcissistic, but because it was the name that was apparently catchy. So that we drew straws and that's how it worked out. Anyway, thrilled that everybody is here. We're going to be talking about 2021 and our outlook investment wise, lots of questions. And this is something that as an investment committee, we meet every week. We typically meet Tuesdays and some of that is because Mondays are just hairy. And also because some days Mondays are market holidays. So Tuesdays are the most consistent. So that's when we get together, we also get to see what happened, right? Monday is oftentimes a good indicator of what's going to go on for the week. So when we get together on Tuesdays, we can talk about emerging trends and so forth. And so we're going to talk bigger picture today about how we're setting expectations for 2021. And we're also going to try to field questions that you guys have. So if you have a question you'd like to specifically bring up, feel free to drop them in the chat, but I'm going to ask a question and I'm going to get us started here. Justin, can you give me a sense of, let's talk about where we've been. So 2021, you are arguably the fewest years in the business. So I'm really interested to get your take on 2021 and what, what do you think God has here so far? And what are some of the themes that you're watching now?
Yes, well, for the most part, obviously, since I am the youngest one, I've never really seen anything like this because in 2008, I was just getting out of college. So I wasn't paying as much attention to that. And so, you know, what we saw was this drastic movement down and this big transition and where money has been headed. And so it's been, it's been interesting and just seeing where the money movement, where we need to shift, where we have shifted our money and where we are going to continue shift the money kind of going forward. It's been a lot of learning on my end of it, a lot of great coaching from you and Wes. It's just something I've never seen before. And it's where we made our transitions to the theme of where we are at right now with, we're getting to the vaccine is more being talked about. We're getting back to opening up. We made a transition from, you know, one of our larger caps, more of the smaller mid growth caps at the beginning of November with the anticipation of the market opening back up or the economy opening back up. So yeah, so that's kind of where what I've seen, what I've got, you know, from a lot of this, it's been, it's been a new experience.
Sure. Well, Wes, I'm going to ask the same question to you, a few more years under your belt. You want to just reflect a little bit on 2020?
Yeah, it's just a reminder that even though the circumstances are different, the reaction is still the same, right? So when we watch markets move, what we're seeing is, oh, hey, we had a huge, a huge drop in the stock market specifically. And you go, it's different this time, but yet you look back 2008, 1999 and 2000, it's the same, but it's different. And I think that's the reminder for all of us. It's important that we're not emotionally engaged and it's really important that there's someone on the other side. I just got in a car wreck on Thursday night and I'm like, my brain's just in a big fog. And so I picked up the phone and said, all right, help, I can't think and I know I can't think. And I needed someone on the other, on the other side of that. And that's really what it's like when we're dealing with people's hopes and dreams, fears, and a little bit of greed in the overall economy and market. So, but it's been a good year of recovery and we're grateful and we're excited about what's moving forward.
Yeah, weird year. That's what I'll say, you know, let me kind of throw in my two cents on this one. First, I appreciate everybody's insight and both of you guys have talked about one of the values of doing this as a committee. You know, it's really easy to get into your own head and live there. And then either you can think you're always wrong or you can think you're always right. But you know, not having an outside perspective is tricky. So I appreciate having the various viewpoints as we come together as a committee and talk about what we see. So we're going to talk a little bit about how we do it today and then we're going to talk, let's, let's kind of shift gears into looking forward here because I want to make sure we have plenty of time for Q and A as well. When I look at the 2020, I mean, obviously COVID is a huge theme, right? I mean, it had a major impact. It did force us to do some things that I think were different than we expected. We talk about, and let me, let me, let me say this real quickly. I'm going to preface what I'm about to say. This call is intended to be information, okay? Or this, this stream right now, we, we don't want to have this be viewed as investment advice. Okay, so we're not going to be giving specific advice today. We're going to be talking in generalities. Anybody that's watching this, if you have specific questions to your circumstance, you know, if you're on our, if you're part of our team, hey, call us. We want to talk to you about your circumstance. And if you are watching this and you're not currently a client of our firm, that's okay. Go to the person that you need to, but don't consider this personalized advice. So there, now that I've got that disclosure out of the way, we, you know, checked the compliance box for our lawyers. We, one of the things we do is tactical management. Okay. And for a lot of investors, if you don't know what that means, think of it as trying to skate to where the puck is going, rather than just setting up an investment strategy and rebalancing it from time to time and keeping things static. We're looking at how things evolve and we're trying to intervene to give our, our investors a better risk adjusted outcome. Now, no, this was really on display in March when the market started rolling over and aggressively falling. And a lot of people will ask, why didn't we intervene sooner? And here's the reality, we enter, we overrode our own processes. We have a statistically driven models and we use artificial intelligence and neural networking to analyze market data and give us big picture signals about excessive risk in the market. And we see excessive risk, then we step in to take action. And we could see that the data was evolving so quickly that the algorithms that we had, the probability that they were going to trip, if you will, that they were going to give us signals was so high that we sort of front ran our own signals. Now, normally we don't do that because the whole purpose is to be disciplined and not get out over your skis. But it was really obvious that the markets were going to unravel. Once it became obvious that the signals were going to trip, we went ahead and executed early. And what we did was we raised capital on our equity allocation. So if you had stocks, we probably saw about a 30, 35% cash increase. Like we sold off stocks and then what happens is the markets went down, they stabilized and they quickly started going back up in April. And then we managed, we moved right back in, but we didn't buy all the same stuff that we sold. We bought some other things that had been really extremely battered. And this became a theme for 2020 and it's primarily in the equity markets, right? So that we're talking about stocks. So we bought back stuff that was really abused. That's a code name for just the prices were way, way off their highs. And then the sum of what we sold, we just hung on to the rest. You know, an example might be Amazon. Okay, again, not recommending here, but Amazon, we sold part of it. We didn't actually rebuy Amazon on the flip side because Amazon just kept going up and up and up. So it automatically became a larger portion. But what we did get to do was we went and bought some Boeing and some Uber and a couple of other things that were really beaten up. And those ended up contributing a lot to the equity strategies later. So that, that was a, an example of tactical management, doing what we hoped it would, which was it lowered some of the extreme volatility and we ended up repositioning and adding some value there. So we ended up with really close to pretty well market performed for major indexes, but we did so with less total drawdown. And that's a big part of what we're trying to do is stabilize client investments so that the drawdowns are less significant. So I know that's a lot of nerd stuff, but that's a look at what 2020 brought us and how we had to intervene. It came up with the, the idea of the barbell portfolio, right? That's a funny one. Wes, you want to tackle the concept of the barbell portfolio?
No, I was just thinking specifically about, I don't like to do that, but I was thinking specifically about some of the themes that we pulled, that we pulled from our transition in March. And one of the ones was our stay at home theme. We like to look at themes and we're looking at saying, okay, what's the next opportunity out there? We just saw, look, this isn't, we're not, we're not going to leave town anytime soon. So how do we capitalize on that? So one of the ways we did that, we bought a little sales force, thinking there's going to be more need for stay at home pieces. We looked at people aren't shopping as much, where are they going to shop now? We looked at several different aspects. The other one that we saw was the home builder side. You know, I was, I'm actually in the middle of building house right now. And prices, the demand for houses was actually interesting because what we saw is people moving out of the cities now that we're staying home and moving into the suburbs. And so that drove a demand for housing. And so we had that. And now we're really looking at that three, that reopening thing. What does that look like? How do we capitalize on some of the aspects that haven't done as well because they've been closed down? So that'll just give you an idea on the theme piece.
Yeah, well, that is the barbell, right? You know, the stuff that works if the market stays closed, the stuff that works if the market reopens. And we looked at both and you know, we hung on to the stuff that was working because the market stayed open. That was a lot of the major tech stuff, right? Tech didn't have to shut down for COVID. But then there were things that were really beat up. And so the home builders trend became a really interesting one. Companies like Home Depot and Lowe's had a lot of tailwinds this year. Other companies had a lot of headwinds, right? The restaurant hospitality industry, really tough sledding to be in those categories. And we haven't played much there. We did get into aviation a little bit and we didn't stay there long term. We still own a little bit in the aviation sector because it was really beat up. We're very cautious about that because that's a fragile market and they burn cash like it's their job. So if you're going to burn a lot of cash, then you have to have a lot of customers move through. So as an example, we watch TSA gate checks, right? The number of people going through the TSA checkpoints is an indication of the health of airlines. And as we saw those numbers improving, we did buy some airlines, but then we saw plateau. And as things started to plateau again, then we really, we let go of one of our positions that was sort of a broad based airline sector exposure. And we ended up hanging on to, we still own Boeing and we still own Southwest Airlines. But again, no, those are not recommendations. Those are just things that for our clients that it matches their risk profile. We have those in our portfolio. So those are interesting. Looking forward now, let's, let's, let's look at 2021 for a minute. Wes, what do you, what do you think is big for 2021? I know our investors have a few questions that we'll get to, but I want to know, what do you think is going to be an important theme looking forward?
Well, we, I know this is one of the questions, but it's also, it's a tip for the answer as well. But the big thing is it's a change of leadership in the United States. That's really, could be very substantial. Specifically, and probably more importantly, believe it or not, is the race in Georgia for the Senate seat. And the reason behind that is our, our government, you know, I'm just amazed at our founders, but our government was designed for gridlock. I know that's frustrating for a lot of people. But my father-in-law had to remind me, it's like, look, not one person's going to run away with the, with the dog and pony show. You got to have a collaboration. And so we feel that the Senate rate will trend at race will be important just to keep that checks and balances in play or not. And that will determine a lot what's going to, to happen. So when we have a transition of leadership, what's, what's their initiatives? The first hundred day initiatives? We're already seeing a little glimpse to some of the folks that are being appointed to some of the cabinet positions. But what we think's coming and then what actually is coming, we definitely have our eyes and ears open. The other side is we're very, have a very positive outlook on the overall US economy. That being said, we're moving from a presidency or leadership style that's more US first versus someone who's more global first. And I'm not trying to get any, into any politics per se. There's always opportunity in any environment and that's really what we're trying to capitalize on is what's the leadership going to do? How's that going to affect our US positions versus our international exposure? So, and then we look at low interest rates and the Fed chair who's coming in and we go, okay, this is again, positive for low interest rates, which means this money's cheap and so businesses can borrow cheap money to drive their businesses forward. And so that's very positive for overall market. And one of the things that we watch is called the beer ratio. No, it's not Corona or Michelob or whatever you're drinking on the draft side. It's really about bond equity, bond earnings and equity ratio. And really what it looks at is behind the scenes, it says, where is the, where, if I'm going to, if I'm going to bet on a dog, right? And in, in, or a horse in the horse race, where should I put my money? Is it more conservative? Is it more in bonds or should I be more equity focused? And that ratio really helps us determine, are things exciting or is this, should we lean more towards equities or should we pull back a little bit? And all indicators that we have right now feel like it's a great, it's going to be a great 2021, not without a hiccup or two, however. And we anticipate that as well. So yeah, so we're really excited about 2021 and are keeping our ears to the, I remember as a kid, we used to go down the railroad tracks. We put our ear on the, on the rail, listening for the train to come. And because we could hear it a long ways before we saw it. So that's what really we're trying to do with our investments as well.
All right, good stuff there. I want to pick up on a question that we've been asked a lot. And I think that our audience is curious about. And you indicated that, so the, the beer ratio, bond equity, bond equity to earnings yield. And one of the things is that when, when you look at how we price stocks, right? If you're trying to gain stock price, what we're really doing is at a simple level, there's a supply and demand for stocks, right? And so what are the things that would influence the demand? And one of them is this comparative ratio. So you say, well, what can I get paid to go somewhere else besides the stock market? And then how much do I need to get paid to take additional risk to be in the stock market? And that's a lot of what that ratio was suggesting to us. Well, there's been a lot of money printing, right? A lot of quantitative easing. The Federal Reserve has been highly involved in the monetary system right now, something that we call monetary policy, right? So when, when the government changes tax rates, things like that, that's known as fiscal policy. Monetary policy is the Federal Reserve and the price of capital, right? So the interest rate that you pay on it. If we're talking about monetary policy and money printing, if you will, what does that do to things like the beer ratio in the stock market? Ah, okay. So this is the, everybody's going like, oh, don't set me up that way. I will help you guys out a little bit because I am leading the witness, right? And you guys could tell, I, you know, it's not like we scripted this in advance or anything. Think about supply and demand for a minute. And if you can get nothing for a rate of return in your savings account, right? And so this is like a zero rate of return essentially. And if you think about 10-year treasuries right now, so you can go loan money to the government and the government has a printing press, so they're going to pay you back. The question is whether or not they pay you back with dollars that are as strong as they are today, right? Will you lose purchasing power or not? And based on the current interest rates, the assumption is that the dollars today are going to have roughly the same purchasing power as they will in 10 years, based on the interest rate that you would get. Whether or not that's accurate is a, is debatable, right? Whether or not we'll see inflation between now and 10 years from now. And so will that ultimately be the case? But what we know is you're not getting paid for savings, which forces you to look in other places and then closely examine how much risk you're willing to accept. This is something that we call the Tina market. This is a funny one. Justin, I've told you this one a million times, you got to tell everybody what Tina means. Oh, you could, you're going to kill me on this one. Wes knows, all right, Wes, I'll let you bail him out.
I don't know what Tina is.
You're kidding? There is no alternative. That's what Tina means. There is no alternative. And so it's this cute acronym that says, if there's nowhere else for money to go, it's forced into the markets. And this is the part that's interesting. When we say we think the markets are going up, you have to ask yourself, why would you think that in the midst of a pandemic with massive unemployment? And it looks like a hot mess, a transition in leadership, and you're telling me you're optimistic? Well, no, we didn't tell you we're optimistic. What we're saying is there's nowhere else for money to go. And there's a really interesting mechanical theme that I want to discuss here. And it is if the money can't go, if there's nowhere else for it to go. So this one, Justin, where does the money go right now in the stock market? Like where was the number one performing sector for 2020 so far?
Technology, big tech for sure.
Big tech for sure. But we talked about this one too. Wes, in the S and P 500, is it, is it an equal playing field?
No, in fact, we break it down by 10 different sectors. So there's different parts. And it was interesting and we watched this every week. So there are seven different sectors right now that are outperforming the group as a whole or the, or the whole bucket per se. For example, and I'll just pull this up and I'm looking over at my other stream. Top one is in the last week was communications. That would be like telephone, financials are rocking it right now. Consumer discretionary materials, tech is the next one, healthcare and industrials. And then we have the group. So we, we're looking for opportunities in that sector. I want to shift gears on you one second, David, because you were talking about no place else to go. One of the things I'm looking at the 10-year treasury, right? That's the government 10-year bond. It's yielding about 0.8%. And that's when you looked, when you looked at inflation last year, I think Justin, you pulled a number for me the other day. I think it was like 1.7%, right?
Yeah, 1.68 or something like that.
So I'm just like, look, they're, what they're saying is if you take my money, the government's money and hang onto it for 10 years, you're going to be behind about 10% over the next 10 years. And so that's where the Tina effect is. Is that what I want? Do I want to go broke slowly or am I looking for another alternative to potentially at least keep up with and potentially outpace that inflation or my, so my purchase of power stays the same?
Yeah, that's, that's exactly the point I was making. So let's talk mechanically real quickly. I think 21, 2021 remains, I think the stock market continues to be a place where even though I'm not going to say there won't be volatility, that the trend looks positive. Here's, here's my take on it and I'll just summarize real quickly because everybody's looking for a key point here. I think the, my, my take on this, the market continues higher because there's nowhere else for investors to go. I think that the rate of climb probably slows. And I'm going to make two comparisons right now. And this isn't political, but it is observations of political regimes. The Obama administration came in after the Bush administration and the 2008 collapse. But he came into office while the market was collapsing. If we were to take sort of a plot average of the eight-year return over his tenure, it includes that big dip which skews the statistics, but you get a sense of the slope of the climb of the market. How aggressively is it rising? And it was less aggressive than under the Trump administration. Of course, Trump administration started in very different times. So I'm not saying one horse was better than the other, but I am suggesting that if the Trump administration was by and large lowering taxes in general and spending tons of money in the government. Less about politics, my observation over 21 years doing this is that when you have political regimes that deficit spend a whole lot, credit card feels good, right? You get instant gratification, even though the problem comes later. So you can have pretty good years in the market when you just spend a lot, period. And government doesn't have a whole lot of accountability to spending, at least not the federal government. And so if that's the backdrop, the Trump administration was by no means deficit hawks, right? I mean, they were like, hey, deficit spend, who cares? We already had a great economy and it was, let's spend more anyway. So the Trump administration spent lots and lots of money. And then COVID hit and we printed and conjured up roughly 20% of GDP to the tune of over four and a half trillion dollars of more money conjured up. So it, it, it makes you look at the, the money printing and then where does the money go and so forth? Well, the money hasn't been dropped into the consumer's hands except for where? Housing, right? We made housing super cheap. And so if you can, low interest rates and you can access money, you can drive up the price of housing a lot. We've seen energy decline in price. We've seen food go up and a lot of that's because of COVID constraints in the supply chains, which have just made things more expensive. But as I look ahead with this backdrop and I just explained, we print all this money, we bring in a regime that's still going to print more likely. I think that it's the higher taxes and that's why Georgia matters so much, right? A senate that's split with the house means more gridlock, which means policy changes less, because you're going to need more bipartisan agreement to get policy changed to the White House. So I think that what we see is a, a, a lessening of the speed of growth of our economy because of a less friendly tax regime and more, in general, we're going to see more regulations. That just tends to be the trend. If we see a continuation of Obama era, Obama era politics, which is largely what the Biden administration represents. So, but there's still nowhere else for the money to go. So I think we're going to have forced demand that moves into the markets. The question is where? And my take on this is if we get into a lot more regulations, then the large caps continue to be the winner. We may see some shifting to the, as the economy reopens and COVID gets stabilized, which I'm optimistic it will, that when that happens, we'll see a shift from large growth to large value, which is apparently at least sort of the, the underperforming large asset class. Why doesn't it move into small caps in a period of increased regulation, right? That's the, that's the key. Like where are you placing your money? And I, my, my take on this, and this is, I'm giving my opinion to the investment committee right now. We haven't, like, we haven't rehearsed this. But where do, what do I think? That I think the small cap market is interesting, but those are the acquisitions for big companies. When you have lots of regulations, large companies are less innovative, but they do have lots of capital and it's cheap. So rather than innovate, you just buy your competitors and you get bigger and bigger. And so you see the Facebooks and the Googles and the Microsofts just keep amassing more because they buy their competitors. And we'll see how the antitrust stuff shakes out. My, my take on this is that a lot of people don't remember, but Microsoft in the nineties went through a major antitrust lawsuit. It was cheaper for them to pay lawyers and stall because they were making money so fast, they could afford to do that and just stall, which they did. They had more resources than the, like federal attorney's office that was trying to stop them. So I could see that happening all over again as the government doesn't even have the resources to stop them. They'll just throw administrative hurdles in their way to play this tune as long as they can. So that's my take. I don't know if you guys have any other thoughts on it.
Yeah, I was just going to give you three, three cases for the, for the, why we're positive or bullish on the, on the overall economy. And then three reasons why there, we think there might be a, potentially be a five to 10% correction. So again, this is us just bantering back and forth as investment committee. But you know, the recovery piece, the recovery theme is a really good reason because there's been a few children left behind. We know that we have a good, a great, a goods and services market. Goods meaning you can't buy a trampoline, you can't buy a bicycle, you can't buy, you know, a lot of stuff. That's the good stuff. The service industry, so they're doing very well. The service industry is lagging. That's the restaurant, that's the travel leisure. So as that recovery begins, that's why we're, we see that as a positive thing. Going back to that, that beer ratio that we talked about, I'm just looking at my notes here. And then the other thing is the stimulus. I mean, I think that's going to cross maybe a little bit of inflation potentially. Again, this is what we're arguing back and forth or talking back and forth. And it's also going to affect some of the real estate. So like, like the positive pieces on the negative.
That's a question too, by the way. We have a specific question, you know, where do we see real estate markets going? And I'd love for you to address that one, Wes, because I know you have personally your finger on the pulse of that and you're right in the middle of the market right now.
Yeah, so we, cheap money, like low interest rates means you can purchase more because it's all about the payment. What is my payment? When COVID hit, my daughter's building a house, we're building a house as well. Lumber went up 50%, five, zero percent. She got a notice from her builder and said, sorry, this prices are going to go up. It's interesting, again, goods stuff is going up, but labor's not necessarily going up. So when you think about what's coming online or what's coming on the new houses, the prices have to go up. In Salem, average lot price here is somewhere's around $120,000, $130,000. You tack in another 15,000 of system, basically taxes, system development charges, right? Then you throw in some permits, you're into the, into a piece of dirt for 150 grand before you ever put, bring a bulldozer in and do anything. And so when you look at the cost of now, now concrete's going up, lumber's going up, it's, it's interesting that I think unless wages go up, Uh, it's in, it's interesting that I think unless wages go up. That the price of houses are going to stall out. Uh, because it can't sustain. And, uh, the person that's buying, especially the entry level, are going to have a hard time. So I think we're going to see a stall out, especially in the single family, uh, entry level. Price point, so we're, we're kind of watching that. We think we've played our, our home builders theme. We're definitely, uh, looking at and say, are we a little long in the tooth here? Are we about done with that theme? So that's important. Um, so that's what I think is going to happen in real estate. I don't know about the, um, um, I know, again, go back to hotels, motels. Uh, they're struggling right now, so we're hoping that sector will come up. Uh, we think retail's a rough place to be. I wouldn't be in retail, uh, real estate. Uh, but again, I'm just talking about the average homeowner. I think there's going to be some opportunities out there in the next six to eight months, maybe to pick up some deals. And, uh, so if you're looking for a rental, that might be, uh, might be an option. Going back to my, uh, why we think there's going to be a correction or could be. The senate, the senate race is huge. Let me just tell you, that's probably more important than the presidential race right now. Because we, we can't handle any more taxes and see our businesses move forward. Uh, number four is in January, January, Q four results come out. So now, now we get, we've taken the test, now we get to show our, our, our test grades to mom and dad. And say, did we do as we, as good as we think we did? If the last, you know, basically October, November, December, if the numbers aren't as strong as we think they are. That could cause a little dip. And then the COVID numbers, I mean, let me just tell you, people are freaking out. So when they freak out, they make bad financial decisions. And so if we see an increase in numbers, which we probably will. Uh, through, uh, December, January, that could cause some uncertainty. And actually, I look at it like this, it's, it's can be some buying opportunity personally. So, um, that's kind of my take, that's how I would argue, uh, with David and Justin and say, here's my position, here's what I think's happened. And then we collaborate our ideas and, and build themes, investing themes based on that.
Yeah, cool. Justin, anything to add on the real estate discussion there?
No, nothing to add on that. Other than you, you know, we just went through the process of buying a house and you have about. Twenty-four hours to make a decision right now with how fast things, houses are going. So, uh, it's, it's a different time, but it's, you know, money's cheap right now, so.
That seems to be the balance in, in my estimation is the money is cheap and that's what supported. The inflation in the materials. But because unemployment is so high, it's sort of suppressed labor costs. Because there's a lot of competition for labor and so people that are otherwise. Uh, unemployed can get into construction. So if there's a lot of supply of labor, it doesn't drive the price of labor higher because you can substitute really easily. But, uh, the materials, there's sort of a supply string, uh, supply chain constraints. But, uh, the next thing is there's a structural element to this. If we're not going to see wages rise and the interest rates aren't going to go down further. Then we're going to start to limit the access to capital. And my sense is that that can have a. It, it can sort of create a plateau effect for real estate. So I think we're reaching that capitulation point structurally where we just, folks are going to run out of. Dollars to throw at it. And at that point, you're like, well, this is as much as I can borrow, so I can't pay more than that. And we're going to run out of people that can show up and pay more. So that, that'll be an interesting theme to watch. Uh, let's, let's do this now for the, the sake of everybody, uh, on the call here. And we have, we've had some questions that were answered, uh, or asked rather. So I want to go through and, uh, address some of those. Some of them are in the feed, right in our, in our chat box. So feel free to add questions there if we're not getting to them. But, uh, I want to throw out there's a question from Wesley. What is your analysis of the continuing value of the euro against the dollar? Uh, and I think underneath that is, you know, if, if currencies are going to change, you know, what does it look like if? The dollar is going to weaken or strengthen? Uh, and so, uh, Wesley, first off, the, the dollar's been historically strong for a while now. And a weakening currency in theory, weakening US dollar should help us in terms of. The balance of trade. So when our dollar is weaker, then other countries can buy from us, so we can export more cheaply. Uh, I think that there's a number of things that are tied into this. Uh, commodity prices are tied into it, you know, the oil trades in dollars. And so, uh, it's what the energy is going to be connected to this. Uh, Wes alluded to this earlier. One of the things that we see is with the change, the, the Biden administration coming in. I, I suspect that we're going to see more of a global take. You know, Trump was big on unilateral deals where, uh, Obama previously had been multilateral deals. So bring lots of countries in, try to get a, a big kumbaya group and Trump was kind of a, nope, I'll just go country by country and do what I need to do. I think if you see more of a return to this sort of global take on governance. That, uh, that the US dollar potentially, not because of that, but I just think because of the, the, the difference of attitude. You see the US dollar weaken, um, I also think that we're, as we get through COVID. Uh, we're going to see. Uh, other markets lift a little bit, but I think you're, the emerging markets are more interesting to me than Europe. Right, Europe's a, a big market. But Europe's also demographically, they're not producing as many babies, frankly, you know, the, the, the. The more mature in the first world country status that countries have with, unless they have immigration. You're seeing actually as people become more affluent and more educated, they have fewer children. And so that creates a population problem for economies. And it sounds weird, but if you don't make enough babies, it's long term, it's a deficit for economic growth. Uh, that's true in Japan historically. It's potentially true in China as a result of the one child policy they've had. So China's got some headwinds, um, as you look out. And then I, I think, so I'm less concerned about Europe, but I think. Emerging markets are a really interesting place to watch as the dollar shifts. Uh, and we think that's part of the regime change. And so that's Wes's theme earlier is, hey, we're watching emerging markets. That's sort of a, so the tip of the hat as to why we're watching them. Uh, so hopefully that answered the question there. Um, have a couple others, we flirted with this a bunch, but. Uh, what do we think the overall economic impact and the stock market impact is once the Biden administration? Takes over, assumes their role. Uh, first, I'm going to go ahead and out there and say. Uh, I realize there are still lawsuits and so forth. I think that the Biden administration is going to be the next administration. I don't think the lawsuits are going to stop it. I know that there's, um, all kinds of stuff in the. You know, on that interweb thing they have out there for them kids, right? That, that suggests that there could be lawsuits or, you know, surprise holdups in a process that, you know, Trump may still be. I don't think that's happening. I think that's a super outlier scenario. So assuming that Biden is in there. I think we talked about a lot of it, so I don't know that we need to further delve into it, but, uh, you know. A more aggressive tax position. We, we could talk about why, I don't, I don't think it's real fruitful to talk about. Why, I mean, there's, it's, there's, I have a cynic's view on, on taxes. Cause usually it's like lip service to taxes, but we all end up paying them. Uh, you know, if you're in the percentage of the population that's not paying taxes, it doesn't matter because you're not going to charge taxes. Cause it's a voting block that doesn't cost anything to cater to. Uh, and the, the folks that have high enough incomes are pretty small bandwidth. And so there's not enough voters there to stop them. And so if you're in the spot where you don't. You make enough money that you, you know, that you're a target for taxes. But you don't make so much money that you're a massive political donor and then you get different treatment. You get taxed and you know, your vote is going to get overridden by everybody else in a lower tax bracket. So it's politically expedient to target those folks and provide a voice for the tax, the rich thing. But we never seem to tax the elite rich. Because, again, the cynic view in me says they kind of. Install the politicians through the dollars that they throw around. And the lobbying and so forth. So, all right, there, I said it anyway. But what do you think, Wes or Justin? Do, do you have a difference of opinion? Not to put you on the spot. Am I just jaded?
I'll jump in, uh, no, I just think, uh, again, I'm a little bit agnostic when it comes to this. Uh, do I like paying taxes? No, I've been to other countries and appreciate America, so. Uh, what is there? Arizona calls it a taxation privilege tax. And, uh, so I'm glad to be an American, I'm going to tell you that, let's start with that.
Same.
That being said, uh, again, that's why we're just looking to what headwinds, head, increasing taxes would be a headwinds to the economy. So if we see that, then we're going to shift, we're going to adjust. And so I think that's really all you can say. Uh, it is what it is. Um, my vote's not in there, so I'm not, I'm not a senator or representative and I never want to be one. So let's just go with that, so. Um, yeah, so I'm good. It's really about the, uh, about our elected officials, if you don't like them, change them, but. Uh, if not, we're going to roll with what we get.
All right, Justin, I got a fun one for you. With the US treasury creating new dollars and devaluing our currency. How can we best protect our financial assets from a possible collapse of the dollar? And there's a couple of questions in there. First, do you think the dollar's going to collapse? And then if it does, how can you protect against that?
I don't think that it's going to collapse. I mean, I could see a devaluation, you know, in the next year or so possibly. Um, but I think there'll be a lot of warning signs before that actually happens. Um, and then the protection war aspect of it would just be a transition. Um, on where we're kind of positioned as a market. I still think we're going to see eventually a transition of more of these value stocks are going to start correcting. Like, or getting back into better position than they have been. Um, but I don't see an absolute collapse of currency.
What do you think?
Yeah, I would say own stuff, not cash. I mean, that's just, cash is my, I look at cash right now as an emergency fund. It is really my opportunity to buy something in the future, in the near future. Um, you know, and stuff means not just stuff that devalues, but I own companies. And, and I own real estate, that's stuff that if inflation come, goes up. I mean, most of us that are my age remember the late seventies, early eighties, um, people were paying. You know, seventeen, eighteen percent interest rate on their home loans. And one person, I said, what, you know, I, I had just started looking. I'm like, why in the world would you do that, pay that much? And the comment was this, if I don't buy it now, I can't afford it tomorrow. And so, uh, that's just a good, we're a picture if, if you can remember back that far. Of what drove, um, what basically it was a safety net, it was really companies. Uh, and it was really the real estate piece, so hard assets, I appreciate it.
I think the assets is the key on that one personally, and I, I appreciate that take on it is. Owning assets, those are the things that ultimately reprice. I like to use the example of, uh, the Civil War. Uh, for a while, the Confederate states had their own currency. And it ultimately ended up worthless, but it didn't mean that all of the property. In the Confederate states was worthless, it just meant that the currency was. And it ultimately reintegrated and repriced into what is now dollars. And so the, the artwork and the furniture and the homes and the property, all that stuff had a tangible value. But when the currency had to be adjusted. If that's the tangible value may have delinked for a while, meaning it took a while before they were reintegrated into the other currency. But ultimately they did reintegrate into that currency. And so assets maintain and retain value. So that's what I like about equity in, in companies, especially large global players is. You know, they represent a way to have an asset that can adjust for future value. And that's what the stock market's doing is it's pricing in future earnings. Uh, I do want to pose. Another theory, and I'm going to wrap it into the next question we have here, which is about cryptocurrency. And this one to me is interesting. Uh, uh, we had a, one of our folks ask, how do you feel about cryptocurrency? And that includes things like Bitcoin and Ethereum and others, but to be part of a diversified asset portfolio. So this is a trick question because our investment committee has not tackled. The, uh, question of cryptocurrency. Wes?
Yeah, I, I would say this, I, I love blockchain technology. Uh, and that's really probably what excites me more and crypto is just a base, base of that. Um, it's just really a way of tracking, uh, goods and services. So, uh, and it's, it's amazing. So we can know exactly what parts came from where. Um, it provides a place of accountability. If you're a conspiracy theorist, I have some other things that I would share with you on that one. Uh, but I do think it's the wave of the future and I think, uh, the cryptocurrency is just a. Exchange medium, it's a trade, it's a way to trade on that blockchain technology. That's my take. Um, on it, um, there's no way government is going to let some third party take control of their pocketbook. So they're going to figure out a way to get in that if, if truly we're shifting that direction. So, uh, if I know enough about, uh, people and about, uh, power. Um, I'm not really worried about, you know, how the government's going to get in there. Uh, I do love, I do love the blockchain tech, technology, so I think it's something to be aware.
Me too. I have some thoughts, but Justin, do you have any thoughts on, uh, blockchain?
No, I agree, I agree with Wes, the technology is great. Um, but you're right that the government's going to have a piece of it somehow or another.
So here's my theory and I'll just, uh, put this one out there and, uh, for posterity. Right now it's, uh, officially in, uh, the record and on video and so forth. My take is that the government's going to have a lot of trouble getting into Bitcoin. The Bitcoin itself, because it's, uh, first of all, it's extraordinarily hard to spoof. Near impossible based on the, the resources that are available and how it's, how it's managed. Because, uh, this, we're not going to do it on this call, but. Look at blockchain, you know, go Google how that works and you'll discover that it's really, really hard to corrupt blockchain. And so it makes it a very stable medium. Uh, it has value because we believe it has value. But that's the same thing as a dollar, right? It's a faith and credit that makes the currency have value. Uh, it's not like gold that's physically tangible, but it behaves like digital gold. Because there's a finite amount of Bitcoin in existence. And that's the part that I think's interesting. You can't print more Bitcoin. They can print more dollars and so the government can manipulate those. But you can't just print more Bitcoin. And so if you print more dollars, but the Bitcoin is similar to a digital gold. Then it can continue to reprice because of scarcity. And that's to me what's interesting. And so any blockchain scenario like that, you can make scarcity a component. The blockchain technology, by the way, can be valuable for far more than just cryptocurrency. That to me is way more interesting than cryptocurrency itself. Blockchain can revolutionize a lot of what we do. Uh, so we'll follow that technology and that will be a long-term investment theme that we continue to revisit as a committee. But to the point of, do we think the dollar will collapse? My answer is, I don't think so. Because, because Bitcoin can be done anonymously, it's much harder to track. It's a good black market type of currency. And if people will use it through vendors that will track it, you can be, you can tax things the way you would do like a sales tax or something. But it's, it's much harder. And I think by intention, a lot of folks are going to avoid integrating it because they don't want to pay taxes. They don't have to using Bitcoin, right? It's like a barter system almost underneath the hood. But it also is the reason, like, the government's not going to go out and pay for infrastructure with Bitcoin. They're going to use dollars. And our economy is built on an infrastructure that the government manages and we all chip into the kitty to manage that infrastructure. So I don't see the dollar collapsing. And also the dollar is the only thing in the planet. That's liquid enough to accommodate all the other players in the financial markets coming in to utilize right now. So as much as it bothers me. That we are printing currency and passing the bill on to our kids and great grandkids. Every other country is doing it at the same time, doesn't make it okay. It just means there's no referee that's going to blow the whistle right now and call foul. Bitcoin is as close to a referee as we have. And you can see it spiking in value in anticipation of these dollars getting watered down. But it's not broadly distributed and it's something that I think is going to continue to be. Uh, until we come up with a different system, it's going to be more black market. So for the time being, that's, that's my assessment. So no, I don't think that our, our economy is going to collapse. I don't think our currency is going to collapse. And keep in mind, printing money. The biggest problem with printing money is everybody gets their hands on it at once. Right now we print money and the, the Federal Reserve has it on their balance sheet. That's primarily where a lot of it's gone. And it's gone specifically into the hands of, uh, small and medium sized businesses to be distributed to employees. The, in this second round of stimulus, it's not a lot of like, here's a check, go spend it. That's inflationary, just putting money directly in people's hands. They're trying to put it into the system to get it into people's hands and it's a lot more janky, if you will. So anyway, that's my take is that I think crypto's probably here to stay at this point. You know, I, I think it's survived infant mortality. Now it just has to grow up and figure out how it's going to integrate into the system, but we're not there yet. And so it is speculation. And it's, when I say speculation, I don't think it's part of a diversified asset portfolio in material amounts. You want to own like a five percent stake in something like that? Okay, we can talk, but I don't think it's a mainstream asset and I would be careful. Cause the government has yet to figure out how to sink their closet to it. And when they do, I think it can materially change. So, uh, anyway, that's it. So I, I, I don't see other questions floating around. Um, let me ask, I'm going to see if Heather, who's our offsite moderator, have we had any questions come through on Facebook Live? Cause I can't see that right now. So if we have, ping me real quickly, or if you guys have a question for anybody that's watching. Um, throw it in the chat real quick. Um, but if not, I will say, you know, we're coming up on a little over fifty minutes or so. And I think that was, that was, I've, I've said my piece. So twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, I think we're still optimistic. Volatility is not out of the woods. Uh, here's the trick question now, there, no, this is a gentleman's bet, right? Or gentlewoman, gentleperson's bet. Do you, Wes and Justin, do you guys think that we will have a correction, meaning a, a, a price pullback that exceeds ten percent at some point in twenty twenty-one? And it's just kind of a yes or no, nobody's going to hold your feet to the fire. Just do you think you will have a correction that exceeds ten percent?
I would say my, my vote is no. I think we'll receive, we'll see ten percent, but you asked if it'd be greater than that. Um, I would be surprised, so I'm, I'm, I'm voting no.
My vote is no unless, um, unless it's, you know, what happens in Georgia? Um, I think if that happens, you could see a, a larger correction, you know, around the ten to twelve percent correction. But, um, other than that, I don't think, no.
Yeah, my vote is, I, I'm with you, Wes. I don't think we, and I'm guessing this is not, you know, you got, we're just flipping a coin, right? But the data that I see right now, probably, uh, if, if we do ten percent is probably a, a fairly significant correction at that point. Uh, I don't see a, a, a COVID style event, what we call a black swan, something that's not in the data that indicates more than ten percent. If we had a pullback seven, eight percent, my view is uh, a healthy correction where it allows people to rebalance and reposition, do some tax loss harvesting and money management. But, uh, and, and we'll tackle that as a committee if and when it occurs. Uh, you know, bear markets are when you exceed twenty percent corrections. Right? So twenty percent pullback rather, so correction is ten, a bear is more than twenty. Right now, doesn't look like it's in the cards based on the data that we know. Um, and as I always say on these things, I reserve the right to be wrong. So anyway, gang, anything else for the good of the order?
No, thanks, uh, everybody for hopping on, both who see it now or, or see the recording later. Uh, I hope you found this helpful, would appreciate your feedback, uh, or things that you're looking to see. Uh, this is kind of a first run for us, we just thought it might be informational. And, uh, so we would deeply appreciate, you know, things you want to see, great questions, uh, and format. So appreciate your feedback, guys, thanks.
Absolutely. Thanks, everybody. Uh, happy holidays and from our household, Merry Christmas. Take care all.